You guys all ready?
All right, let's go ahead and start with our work session. We're going to start with an update from Darren Joffe on the project that he's working on with some folks here in Chattahoochee Hills, support farming and agricultural commons. You ready there?
So I do, I mean, I have a slideshow I could put up, but maybe I'll talk a little bit about it. And if it feels like you guys want me to bring more visuals to the conversation, I'm happy to. I'm Darren Joffe, Farmer D. I have got some deep roots here in the Chat Hills. Started farming here in 2001, started the farm at Serenby before there was kind of Serenby. I left in oh four, oh five, after getting the farm up and running. I've been all over the country since then, designing and building farms, everything from nonprofit stuff and to high-end, super high-end stuff, kind of the whole spectrum. Had a lot of great opportunities to work on regional kind of food systems, land conservation, farm, local food, but developing farms in communities and moved back to the Chat Hills a few years ago with my wife and three kids. And kind of dove right back in in some ways to where I left off, not with the farm in Serenby, but more with the Chat Hills. And it's been really fascinating to see how over the 20 years or 16 years since I left, how much this area has grown in certain ways and how we're, it feels like we're kind of a real important inflection point as a, as a community. I'm a farmer and I own five acres off the Petchinson Ferry. And, you know, having kind of gotten reconnected with, with Mayor Reed and some of the work that's been going on in this area. I wish there were more farms, right? Like there's still only a handful, literally a handful of working farms in the region. And there's, which is unfortunate because this area is so well positioned to have a lot more active farms, feeding our residents and feeding the broader community and kind of, you know, the beautiful thing is we've got zoning to protect the land here to keep it rural, keep the rural character. And how do we activate some of that rural land, that good farmland to be actually producing food and livestock? And providing, you know, economic opportunities for farmers and landowners and, you know, providing food to our community. And so in looking at, I had an opportunity when I first came here last year and a half or two years ago, to do some mapping of all the farmland through a small grant from a concerned citizen. Really, you said, how do we protect these farms and how do we get more farmers and farming going on? And so we, we kind of dusted off some of the old mapping that had been done years past and use some of the new technology to look at all the best farmland in the Chat Hills. And not surprisingly, I guess, there's actually quite a bit of great farmland. Not everything is statewide or farm or prime, but there's good farmland in the Chat Hills. And there's a lot of important farms, I would say, to protect, or maybe some priorities of which farms to protect. Some more important for view sheds or good soils, but there hasn't, there's not really a plan necessarily. There's a lot of people aren't even realized they're sitting on a good farmland or, you know, what, 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 what's worth saving and why? And how do we save the farmland and activate the farmland? And, you know, one of the big issues that has happened across the country that I've seen, and it's definitely happening here, is the, as we become more desirable of a community to live in, the cost of land goes up. We've seen that happen, you know, significantly here. And that unfortunately, you know, pushes agriculture out because it's very difficult for farmers to afford land. I'll just share a very brief personal story. When I was first getting into farming, I was a, I grew up in Atlanta, but I went to school in Wisconsin. And I went to go find, I got into farming, I studied and was ready to buy my own farm. And I had to go hours west of Madison to be able to afford land because everything within an hour or so had been suburbanized and the cost of land was so high because just city folks wanted their country place and people who were from Chicago. So I ended up having to go two hours. And that just actually ended up being kind of, didn't work to be so far away from my market and so forth. And so that was when, you know, 20 years ago, plus I started realizing this is not a good model. If development just pushes farms further and further away from where the people are, farmers are isolated, they're kind of forced to be far away. And until everybody loses, the consumers don't get to engage with the farms as much. They don't have their food close, farmers have to travel further and they're not connected to these communities. And it's just, it doesn't seem to make sense. So I started thinking, well, how do we, how do we, like, instead of bringing the food to the people, you know, and farmers going, how do we put the, bring the farms to the people? How do we put farms where the people are? And really this kind of model of integrating agriculture into development, protecting farms, having the value of development be, you know, investing in protecting and activating the farms where the communities are. Not too different from what, you know, and what Serenby's done. It's one of the only farms in the area is because the development helped, helps support that farm and committed that land to that farm. When you zoom that out at a food system scale, right, at a Chattahoochee Hill country scale, and you say, okay, well, how do we, how do we do that at a city scale, at a regional scale? How do we develop a strong local food system? And first thing is where are the farms that we want to protect? And then how do we protect them? And then how do we get farmers on that land that are actually going to farm there and have a path, a pathway to be a viable farm? And then really the only way to do it is to reduce the cost of the land so that it becomes accessible. The number one obstacle to farmers is access to land and then access to capital. There's a huge market, we're 30 minutes from Atlanta, so we have plenty of markets for farmers. The farmers can't afford to live down here, they can't afford to buy land, they can't afford a house, they can't afford rent. So we're not attracting farmers. So unless we do something about it, we're going to continue to become, maybe there's ways through the zoning to preserve the rural character, but there's going to be more of a estate character, which is what you see in most of the country, wealthier estates, not active farms, not, not young farmers, not working farmers. You have the heritage legacy families here, right? That, and you hope that their next generation is going to get those, those are the, kind of the last hope of folks that can pass the farm on. And you hope the next generation is going to farm. Most of them don't, most of them are selling the farms. It's unfortunate, but we have a shrinking population of farmers, age and also. So what's the solution, right? So I think now that we've kind of mapped where the best farms are and we have zoning in place to preserve a lot of the land here, which is huge. And we have a TDR toolkit to be able to help, you know, kind of reduce the value of land and that those farms, if you protect the farm, right, and you can transfer those TDRs and when there's a value for those, that can help reduce the land costs and provide some accessibility to farmers to be able to afford it. And then thankfully, there's some, there's a couple of models out there that have been tried and true across the country to set up kind of a land trust model. An agriculture, traditionally our land trusts tend to be more for conservation, right? To conserve open space and areas for forests and wildlife and right here. There are more and more agricultural land trusts that have kind of emerged to protect working farms as well. And one of them, we actually, you know, met with today, the Conservation Fund, which is a national organization that has done a lot of conservation land. And they also created a working farm spot specifically to conserve farms and help farmers get access to farmland. Their model was, then they want to build a portfolio of farms in the Chattahoochee Hills. They see the importance and value of having farmers here and the opportunity for this to be a destination farm area where people come. That's the other thing, so it's one thing to have farmers here and be able to have a viable life and activate our, 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 our community with farmers and food. It's also a great draw, right, for people from Atlanta to come out and have, you know, go visit a farm and have that experience and come stay in a, in an inn or, you know, be out in the Chat Hills and have things to do and farms to visit. And we know lots of places around the country where that, and around the world, where that's a huge economic driver for certain areas, certain regions. And so, like, so the Conservation Fund's model essentially is they buy land, they, if there's the soils meet requirements, there are federal funds to help them put an agricultural easement on that land. And then they sell that land to a farmer vetted. They have a pipeline of farmers looking for farms. And then over a course of three to five years, they sell that land to the farmer at about half the price that they bought it for because they were able to take the, the credit for easing, for putting that land on permanent agricultural reason. At that point, the farmer owns, can, can have a pathway to ownership, which is great. They also have, they also now own the farm and they have equity. So there's no, it's a great model for the, for, in one sense, but it also, it's not a guarantee that the farmer's not going to sell it to someone, right? At some point, the farmer could sell it to somebody who, wow, you've got, built this beautiful farm. I'd like to build my, you know, big house on this beautiful little farm. And they may not continue to be a working farmer and the farmer may take advantage of the market value that is, they've created and they could sell it. That's a good thing for the farmer, but not necessarily a great thing for the long-term of kind of accessibility, right? Now we've kind of marketed that, you know, we're back at market value. So there's another model and that, that there's some farm, that model's good and it's working in the Atlanta area and around the country. The longevity of it, I don't know if that's going to protect the farmland in perpetuity, right? Well, it protects it as farmland, it doesn't necessarily protect it for the, the value of it from kind of becoming more market value. There's another model that I've been tracking for years called the Agrarian Trust. And they have a program called the Agrarian Commons. And similar goal, protect farmland, provide access to farmers. But the difference is that it's, it's they decommodify the land. And what I mean by that is they provide, once they've purchased the farm or someone donates the land, similar to the Conservation Fund, they then put it into an agricultural easement and they provide a 99-year lease to a farmer. The farmer's never, that land never gets sold again. That land has been permanently protected as agriculture. And the farmer can build their farm, they can build their business, they can have a home, they can have a greenhouse, they can have a barn. They have equity in those buildings and in that business. They can sell the farm to another farmer and, and, you know, get their money out that way. But they can never sell the land, the land is always under what's called the commons. And what's unique about the agrarian, so, so for context, I've been looking at, you know, what, what's the structure that we use here in the Chat Hills to kind of create a fund to, and, and a, a structure for someone that might want to donate their land or sell it at a discount? Or if we were to raise philanthropic dollars to go buy some of these farms or, you know, the city has funds that come through to go buy these key properties. What's the mechanism and the structure that we use to, to do that? And, and to educate landowners, to educate developers, to educate that there's, there's a, and this model is a national model, they've created a 501(c)(2) structure. So that's the government, that's the land owning, ownership structure and a governance. And what's really unique about the Agrarian Commons model, in addition to this, you know, decomodification of the land, this, this kind of, you know, long-term solution to protecting farmland and ensuring that farmers can be on it, is that they also have a, a governance structure that is local. So a lot of these land trusts are national, they'll come in, they, you know, they'll, they'll kind of buy these, hold these land, hold these properties and they're national land trusts. The way the Agrarian Commons works is we actually set up a local Chat Hills or Hill Country. It doesn't have to be contained just in the Chat Hills, if we wanted to stretch out a little bit, that's fine. But you create a board, a governance board that's representative of the local community. There's one third of the board is the National Agrarian Commons folks and two thirds are the farmers and the local kind of leadership, like the land conservancy here can serve as the 501(c)(3) entity under this commons and be the, the nonprofit that manages these properties. Kind of oversees that their, the farmers are paying their leases and that the land, the money's going back into those farms to improve them. And there's, it's a local management structure, a local governance structure. So a typical agrarian commons is usually between four and 12 farms in a, in a region, in a commons. Some of the commons are statewide, some are kind of more Chat Hills scale. There's different models around the country to look at. And they've created all the governance and legal and structures that you can follow to set, set one up. And the last thing I'll say is, and the way that this typically would work is find one project, right? One good, like pilot project. The local nonprofit in this case would likely be the, the, the conservancy and get one project going and activated under the Agrarian Commons and then use that as kind of your showcase to get other landowners to see, oh, I could be a part of this. I could, you know, sell my farm into the commons or you just start to build your local kind of governance and nonprofit partnership and you use that as kind of the activator for a region. So that would be the goal, if we wanted to pursue this and there's definitely interest from landowners, there's interest from philanthropy and funders, there's farmers. We could pretty easily stand up a Chat Hills or Hill Country Commons, Agrarian Commons and identify a pilot project and make one of these projects happen, protect and activate a local farm and then use that as a building block to, you know, to kind of attract more opportunities for this in the region. So it's kind of a lot of information.
One of the things, open questions. One of the things I wanted to do, and the reason that Darren's here, you know, we've talked previously about the fact that there are a lot of layers and different mechanisms for preservation that might help us make the preservation here happen. There are, you know, conservationists, people donate sometimes for the tax write-off. For example, there are our TDR program, the internal preservation program for hamlets. There are a bunch of different pieces, the American Farmland Trust thing that you were talking, or the American Conservation.
Conservation Fund.
But American Farmland Trust also has a program, the Agrarian Commons is another one. And the idea of, you know, two things, right? One, being informed about what these possibilities are and two, creating kind of a matrix so that landowners and donors and all sorts of people that are looking at participating this can say, this is how I might plug in. And all of these things are beneficial in that they create preservation here. And they also create economic value in that land outside of just the value of the land, like economic viability and farming that, you know, helps that landowner pay their taxes and make an income and all of that in a way that isn't happening in most farming now. Most farmers now have a job and a farm is something that they come do on the weekend, right? They're, they're 65, 70 years old, they're retired. You know, what, what we're talking about here is creating an environment where our preserved land also can be economically viable farms going forward through a bunch of different mechanisms. And my goal was to have people come in and I talked to Stacy Thunderberg about that today. You know, he may come in in a couple of months too, to walk through what that program looks like as we're kind of sewing together this quilt of things that we can do to help support what we're doing.
Darren, how many, what you call them, full-time farmers are there in your map right now in Chat Hills?
When you say full-time farmers?
It's not a hobby farm, that's their, their primary source of income? I think of three, but.
You know, it really depends how we define farmers. I mean, I think, you know, in, in the Chat Hills and the mapping didn't go into the level of kind of interviewing landowners to see how active they are on their farms. It really looks at the soils, where, where are their quality farms? You know, I, I mean, from just driving around and being around, you know, you see, I don't know, you probably see about a dozen farms that are in some level of activity, a few that are maybe a half a dozen that are branded and businesses and some people that are farming. And so if you, if you look in the Chat Hills, it's, it's, it's small, you know, it's a half a dozen active farms. The potential though, and when you see, when I first came to Georgia, after I got into farming in Wisconsin, I went on the board for Georgia Organics. I, I, I interned on an organic farm in 95 in Georgia. It was one of two organic CSA farms in the country, eminent state. Today, there's hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of farms in Georgia. So it, it went from, and it was largely because Georgia Organics helped kind of educate consumers and, you know, open up markets. And, you know, it became a more, it just, it just, it's kind of mushroomed here, really. There's like a huge growing demand in Atlanta for local food and, you know, organic food. And there's just a lot of momentum. And you see it in Atlanta now, the whole urban ag kind of movement in Atlanta has taken off. But what's interesting, and if you go to places like around, you know, you see what Rodale did in Pennsylvania, we have, we have Rodale here now in, in our, in, in the Chat Hills. But like Rodale helped activate, you know, I think they have like over a thousand organic farms in Pennsylvania. And they, one of the reasons they came here is like, this is just untapped. Like the potential for farms in this region is huge. But what, what are the options, like why, you know, some of the reasons why it hasn't grown, why you don't have dozens of, you know, small local farms or even, you know, dozens, we could easily, is, you know, A, they're just not, and and having been involved in a number of farming communities around the country, you need kind of a community of farmers that are supportive of new and beginning farmers. You need like infrastructure and, you know, other people with equipment and experience and, you know, farmers of all, the most successful farm communities are where they come together as co-ops and they work together. So we, we just haven't had that culture, infrastructure.
It had already died in the Chat Hills.
Early on, when Faye Aden was still on the board, first, we looked at that rural co-op as being a member of it, so there is some kind of local rural cooperative, they land farming up there and stuff like that.
Coeida County. Yeah, and so I, I think the, the biggest challenge here has been just the, the, there's, it's expensive. You know, so most farmers are going to go outside of the Chat Hills to find cheaper land. I mean, that's, that's the, that's what, and you'll go around, you'll find farms on the edges. If we can make this a place where farmers can thrive and, and draw farmers here, that will activate these lands that are hopefully already going to be preserved, right? Just through our zoning. But, you know, unless we create kind of a more friendly environment for farmers to be able to come and afford to live here and to be able to have access to land, even if it's, and, and I think both options are good. I think some farmers are going to want to have equity, they're going to be able to build equity in their farms and sell their farm one day. Some farmers won't be able to afford to buy their farms and they don't necessarily care about the equity and, but they want to be able to farm. So the more options I think we can, you know, create here and bring, you know, resources to help preserve the land and attract farmers, the more vibrant this area is going to be. And it's going to actually, like Tom, it's going to increase the value. It's actually going to increase the, the value of land around it, which is what we've seen in any places where you put, I mean, look at Serenby as an example, right? You put a farm in a community, people want to live there, they're going to pay a premium to be there. So there's actually a way of protecting these farms and making them accessible and activating them that's going to actually raise the value of the land around it, which I think is a good, a good thing, as long as you're not doing that and pushing people out. So, right, if people want to stay here and farm, they can, right? And they can participate in the upside of this area becoming more attractive. What, what unfortunately happens most times, it only becomes more attractive and then all of a sudden everybody moved here for that and the farms are all gone. And we see that happen all over the country.
The, the, the thing, again, you know, Troy has mentioned this before too, and I just saw you nodding as I was mentioning, you know, the reality is that we're at two inflection points right now. The farming generation here is aging out, right? They're, they've moved from their 60s to their 70s and some of them to their 80s. And they're still running cattle or whatever, but they're, they're aging out, their kids are not going to be doing it after them. So you've got this kind of generational inflection point that's happening, we better have something ready to step in, right? And the other thing is just the development, you know, we are at that inflection point as well where, yes, the development that pays for the preservation is about to start, but this preserved land is about to be here too and to be activated, right? And so, again, having this kind of layering, what I'm hoping is to wind up with a matrix, we can just walk somebody through. You know, here's what you're interested in, great, here are five different programs you can take advantage of to get some money, to preserve your land, to get somebody on your land, whatever it is that you're looking for. And then here are, if you're a donor, you know, you want to preserve farmland, here are five ways you can participate in Chattahoochee Hills. If you create whatever it is, ways to move that forward.
So has your work, um, the grant and your work primarily just been around the mapping? Or is there a next step to develop a program and bring that forward or?
Yeah, I think that the, having, what, what's been kind of the thing that I think has been holding back the next step has been, we want to be, make sure we go to landowners with kind of these options, you know, and not be too ambiguous about, you know, we'd love to protect the farmland, you know? Here's how you could do it, you know, here are the options. And, and also there's, there's a, so there's a, there's a, there's a, I think as a next step, it's honing in on which of these ideal properties, right? That, that would be great to preserve for farming in this area. Which of those are either aging out and going to be on the market? Which of those are landowners that care about this and would want to see their land go into some kind of a continued agricultural use? And start to work with those families to show them these options, you know, and, and create the structure here to support the process that would be involved in saying, okay, you're interested, you're selling your property. Wait, before you sell it to the highest bidder for whatever, another, you know, someone that wants to develop it or divide it up or build a big house or whatever it is, here's another option, right? We could actually purchase it and preserve it, get the credits, it'll be forever. You could still sell your property, maybe you sell it at a small discount, you know, or maybe not, maybe we're able to buy it at the full price. And then use these tools and kind of stack these tools in our toolkit and be really clear through the conservancy, through the Conservation Fund and having these kind of options to say, okay, here's how this works. And start to do some education and outreach. And I think part of it is doing that somewhat internally first to prioritize properties that we want as a community to protect, you know, and kind of use the relationships that are, that are here in our community to kind of have those conversations more intimately with the, with those properties that we want, we don't want to broadcast that these are amazing properties that have all this value to us, to people, you know, we want to kind of try to get those properties as, you know, you know, and then, and then I'd say the second level of that is then, you know, to do some education and outreach, you know, to the landowners, to the developers, to the philanthropists, you know, to, to get a, a, a kind of concerted effort amongst the Chat Hill stakeholders, that this is a shared goal that we all want to have our farms, you know, protected and activated. I, I can't see why we wouldn't. And so what's the best, what are the tools that we can use to help that happen? And it's not going to happen overnight, we need to get a pro, it would be great to get a project or two happening, you know, pretty quickly because we're at this inflection point, because every, every month that goes by, a great property is slipping through our fingers of what could be protected. Just because we don't have the, like, we don't have the staff and we don't have the structure right now to go be proactive.
So a long-term commitment that came out of our meeting this morning was that one of the people in the meeting who's very close to this on a technical level is going to help us put together that matrix. Because that, just that, being able to say, here are all the tools that might apply, which ones fit you best is, is a piece, right? And, and then, you know, with some other people who are interested in helping push this message forward that might help with the outreach and education side, because that's the other piece, right? You have to get in front of folks and let them know that there are these other options. And, and so we're trying to build to that right now.
And we have, and we have a potential funder and landowner that wants to see this happen. So we actually have a real viable project that could activate what we're talking about. And I think when there's areas like, you know, around like Rico, where there's like, okay, if we, we know that it would be wonderful to have kind of this green belt around the little, you know, protect the, you know, those are, those would be great farms around the town to start looking at and talking to those landowners and saying, hey, you're part of the long-term vision here is, you know, to activate the, you know, the, the crossroads. And that was an agrarian community. What does that look like, you know, what does an agrarian community in the Chat Hills look like in the future? And so if we could protect and activate a few farms around these key nodes, those are priority areas, I think, that would help, that would, it would actually help activate those village, those kind of like, you know, opportunities for the more of the, the development side to know that you've got the kind of activated, preserved and activated farms around them. So there's, when you look at the map, it's interesting because there's like a few kind of strategic areas where you could see kind of like the, the, the kind of low hanging fruit of, of where this really starts to make sense. And then there's also just reacting to like so-and-so's just, you know, passed away and the farm's going to go on the market. And that's a prime soil farm that would be amazing to preserve. And you just jump at those, be ready to be able to like, go to them and say, here's how this, here's how we can help you do this. Or have a fund. The other thing is, we're, one of the things in talking to new developers coming in, you know, to say, hey, you know, we've got a fund, we have a strategy, we have properties we're trying to protect. It would be wonderful when you're coming into our community to do development to help us protect the key properties, you know, that add value to this area and, and actually incentivizing or, you know, encouraging new developers, new development to help offset by prioritizing some of these projects, right? So I think there could be a fund, there could be funding that could come through, through some of the new big development work that's coming to help support that work, especially if it was a community-wide, multi-stakeholder, you know, real clear, you know, structure to it and not kind of piecemeal.
What is the minimum acres for that?
I mean, 20 really, for, I think, the, at least for the Conservation Fund perspective. And, and there's a couple of reasons for it. I mean, there, there are definitely models for smaller micro-farms that would make sense. But what happens is the cost of land on a really small parcels becomes pretty prohibitive. You know, so when you, the, the larger the property gets, the, let's say like the sweet spot is kind of the 100 to 200 acres. Is kind of a hundred to two hundred acres, because the, you know, cost per acre becomes more realistic. And you might have multiple farmers, you might, you might have three to five farmers on a hundred acre farm. They may only need ten, fifteen, twenty acres. Some farmers might be doing livestock and need a hundred acres. Um but that, I'd I'd say between like twenty and five hundred acres, with the sweet spot being kind of in that hundred to two hundred range. Is kind of the ideal scale.
And and that's the idea of creating or or saving these kind of farms that should be farms that maybe aren't, or or maybe won't be. But also having that environment then where you've got a farming community, means that the person who has five acres like you do. That's farming on it, or the person who has two acres that wants to do something on one of the acres, has a community that they can do that in. Right to your point, somebody they can borrow a tractor from if they need it or whatever. And so there's a, there's kind of a virtuous cycle on just more of this. Creates space for more of this.
Yeah, I mean, I I wish, but like I could do this on my five acres, the reality is, you know, uh. The cost to buy a five acre kind of farm ed in this region is, doesn't meet the model so easily. Of these land trusts, because it's just, they have kind of a twenty, twenty to thirty K in ax cap of what they're gonna pay per acre to make it, the performer makes it. You know, to pass it on to the farmer. It doesn't mean that somebody with five acres that falls in love with this whole thing says, you know what, I'm gonna donate my five acres to the. Agrarian commons, they can, it's a nonprofit, they can write that off as a donation. And this happens in the agrarian commons model quite a bit, is people would just donate, you know, it's like you donate your car to NPR, so I feel like you'll donate your. It depends. You could, yeah, you could, you could also do that, you could donate and still be there. So there are a lot of people in the community that have a house that they live in, they have three or four other parcels in the community too. And, you know, uh there's a lot of different ways.
Darren, thanks very much. Any any other questions from anybody? Uh we'll go on and move on to our agenda review. Thanks again for coming in.
My pleasure. Hopefully we'll get some of this going.
And and again, my goal is to have a couple more people come and talk to us about some other different elements of this um. I'm talking to a couple of people that are really uh attuned to tax benefits, because for a lot of folks, that's. One of the best places that they can take advantage of participating in the program like this.
Yeah, I'll I'll work that on it, Rick Rico update a Sunday. That's what you're having, right?
Oh, yeah, no, well, that, that was, yes. Agenda review. Anybody have anything on the minutes that they wanna talk about?
Uh if not, uh I had a couple of questions really quickly on the financial report. Um Robbie, one thing I noticed, and I think this may just be a a translation of these two. The two motor vehicle excise taxes, the percentages are way off, and I think maybe they're catching those in the wrong column.
Yes, they, the motor vehicle ad lib tax and the motor vehicle tax, um they come in and they're very similar. And so when we enter them into the QuickBooks, uh sometimes you enter differently, uh but if you add both of those together, which what what I do. Uh it's like eighty-nine or about eighty thousand, I believe, and then we've collected about, um what, can we get my financials and tell you? Just to get to that point, let's see, it's, yeah, about eighty thousand, we've collected forty-eight thousand, so roughly fifty-nine percent, we're fifty-one percent for fiscal year, so. When you put them both together, it makes more sense, but look at them all right there.
I remember when we originally started tracking that, that was because Fulton County was in the process of switching from one way of tracking it to another. And we knew that one would eventually go down to zero and the other would eventually take up a hundred percent of it. Is there any benefit to us in tracking those separately, or should we just roll them together?
I think we should just roll them together, and it makes more sense, because it it, look, I just. Like I said, we we got fifty-nine percent, we're fifty-one percent for fiscal year, but, you know, it just takes me. Uh it's an easy little Excel spreadsheet adjustment I can make, and I'm gonna do that, it just makes more sense to do it that way.
The other question I had, uh you know, there are several things that we uh don't pay monthly, like insurance, right? So a lot of times we see something where we paid a hundred percent of the, you're staying early in the year, but it's all done. What what are we tracking right now in general admin? Because general admin's well ahead, I'm sure that probably does include some of those kind of payments.
Yeah, you're exactly right on the mark, that's a, some of the things that come in are like risk management, we pay quarterly. Um in general, I've been a hundred percent, we've paid a hundred percent of our audit, that's fifty thousand dollars. And that's, general admin is is essentially Dana's budget, so we're, we're, it looks like we're really almost out of money, but that's because we've already paid in advance. Uh for audit, so now we'll just be tracking as usual, so that was a big ticket item that came in.
Information in the form of questions, I mean, those are the things that kind of jump out when you're rolling through, and if anybody has anything else, I just.
If you ever see anything like that, you have, you have, I'll try to point them out, usually I wanna give my financial report, I point, here's why that is. But if those things jump out at you, just, you know, please do not hesitate to ask me.
Uh next up is the public hearing on the TBR ordinance update. We wanna do a quick re-presentation on that, like like we would do at the meeting, how do we wanna, how do you guys wanna hear about it?
They're gonna be open market price, ten yards? Are we gonna set the pricing on those, or should we? Should we allow paper book? Bargain after on TDR.
Why don't you come on up, Doug, and and you can respond to those questions?
Name's Doug Clown, and working with team of people, uh the city to uh, for updates to the.
Where is Daryl?
Our update is the ADR order, and and the short answer is it's open market, it's free market. The TDR negot, for TDR portion of the program, it's uh the selling property owner to the receiving area property owner. Or developer, whoever it is, that's open market, they negotiate it themselves. Um that's not the only part of this plan, and it's not been the only part, there are actually three programs in there now. Or there will be, there's the TDR program, transferable development rights, the DTC, the density transfer charge, and then the PDR. Portion of the program. And the truth is, is that, is that most of these elements, with one major exception, have been. Part of the ordinance for a long time, the major exception is the PDR, the purchased development rights program, and that's being added to help. Make the DTC portion act, to activate that and make it more meaningful. The density transfer charge program is a program where where a a developer, for example, can come in. And in lieu of coming up with TDRs for increased density at their, at their development, they can actually pay a density transfer charge. Fee to the city. And the city then uses those funds as a dedicated funds for use for conservation. But the city can then go out and purchase development rights, or purchase land, but that's the PDR program. And bluntly, what is the the main purpose of that is gonna be to activate this whole program, and to get it started, to kickstart it. Um it's going to be uh uh much easier for, and we've been talking with some of the potential developers. It's gonna be much easier for them to come in and do density transfer charges. Early in this program than trying to go out and harvest TBRs from up from properties. Um in in fact, it's, it would be a great impediment to that, so. So the DTC program charge, the charge for the DTC is set annually by the city council. So that is the part of it that's not open market, uh the TDR program. If if I wanna go sever TDRs for my property and sell them to somebody else, entirely open market, entirely free market.
The settling side is always open market, right? Yeah, you can't take somebody's TBRs without them deciding what they're gonna sell them to you for. The the, the charge to the developer piece, thing that the DTC program does is it advances. When you get the money, right? You don't have to wait till they've used up all their internal development rights to start getting the increment from the first property sale. So you you get money sooner to buy TBR sooner, that's the, that's the primary goal.
No, it's, these are entirely voluntary programs, please go ahead. Does that take away from the total number that are available throughout the city? No, no, uh because once you, like, once you do a density charge, there's been no conservation of anything. At that point, you've gotta then purchase development rights to actually conserve something. So it really does require both halves of those programs, the PDR program is essential to make sure the DTC program. Actually goes out and conserves something, so. Uh I hope that's, it doesn't change. And and for, for somebody who say has a hundred acres, and they just wanna sell ten TDRs. And I know just from the research I've done, it's generally about a fifty percent to hit on that on that property. If they were to sell it, but underneath, we have, we work on a twenty acre minimum, we can't sell the ten acres outright, but we can evaluate it. So how do we, I guess, does it become a separate piece of property at that particular point? Not really, um the uh, the development right is is one of the bundles of property rights, but. The uh um, the severing, one of the changes that's been. And there are, again, there are many changes from existing program, in addition to the PDR program, one of the changes is to make clear that it's. Wherever you are in Chatty which heels, it's one TDR per acre. So if you've got a five acre property, you've got five TDRs. If you've got a three acre property, you've got three TDRs, there there's a provision for it, there's an existing residence that that takes, that deducts the TDRs, but. It is uh, so, yeah, you can, you could, yes, you can take.
Don't sell ten of your, ten of your.
Just just a question, though, and and I think I'm 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 thinking, I'm I'm hearing what you're getting at, if you have a hundred acre parcel. And you sell ten TDRs off of that parcel, you have to put a conservation easement on ten of your acres, but you don't. You can, you cannot put it on the other ninety. I'm I'm trying to get at what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say, because of that particular point, the the value of that land has the TDR taken off of it, has been diminished versus the value of the land. But yet you're still owning it, so what if I decided to sell that ten acres that I took the CDRs off of one day? How much to sever that from my property?
Well, you could subdivide it if you want, or you could simply. You're correct, just you've decreased the value of a part of the property.
But you got the check up front.
So I think, I think, oh, and I understand that, I'm just saying, citizens need to be aware of that, if you're. If you've got over twenty acres, you need to, you make sure you cough up twenty of them, because you're gonna be sitting on a piece of property over here that you may not be able to get rid of.
I think it's a very good con- con- uh comment, yeah.
So that's why I've always said, I don't see why, somebody, you know, if you have one house on ten acres. And uh that's, that's ninety percent preservation if the house is one acre big. Why there can't be a provision in there, that if a landowner who has, you know, forty or more acres or something, gets in a financial bind, why can't they sell ten acres? Outright and be done with it, and uh they get their money, and somebody else gets the opportunity to look in this good thing. Correct, but but what what I'm saying, if you do the TDR program. And unless you sell it for market value, which I think is like twenty-five, thirty grand an acre right now. Now, if you get three hundred grand on ten acres so big, you got paid. But if you normally, you know, if it gets said, you get one fifty or whatever, then you devalue your property.
If, but that's, no, that's the whole point, you 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 sold the development, right? You got that cash, which you put in the bank or invest in stocks or whatever, so it's growing along. And on that piece of the property, yes, when you go to sell it, that piece may be worth less, probably not, because people are still paying for preserved land, right? But the, but the point is, you've already gotten the money, you don't need to get the money twice.
No, no, you're you're correct, I'm just saying those ten acres, I mean, if those things are sold off of it, who's gonna buy that if they ain't believing in it, nobody?
Well, but if it's a part of my hundred acres that I want to put my horse farm on, I'm gonna sell the other ninety.
I'm just throwing that out there, saying, hey, if they're gonna get rid of the land, give them an option to get rid of it.
And and the conservation.
Ask some of those questions to to make it very clear to landowners that when you sell. You're selling your development right, what does that mean for the landowners? So they're absolutely clear. That that may develop, that devalue your land, because you've already received that payment for that part of it already.
It's totally, and and look, here's the reality, right? That happens in the context of a contract too. So it's not like somebody's just writing you a check and you walk away, right? You're signing a contract that goes through all the details on this stuff too. There's a lot more to it than.
And I think that's the same with the conservation easement program that they have now. So you get a tax break for that, if you have ten acres and you put a conservation easement in it, but when you sell your property, that goes with it. I mean, it's hard, it's recorded as a fee.
And 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 just because there's a conservation easement on ten acres, a hundred acres, whatever it is, doesn't mean that it's totally unusable. For example, in the city, the conservation easement's allowing agriculture, it's not just agriculture, but there are some other uses you can use. Well, like in that situation, you can call this man, say, I've got ten acres over here, and charge him an annual fee to farm. Um we actually have two members of the board of the uh conservancy here, one is Darren and and uh and Reese. Is is on board as well, who uh does our financial work for us, and uh it is uh. Agriculture is is one of the priorities, and we've tried to add a few things in here to show that it is of importance for these programs. These these development rights programs, but it's not the only thing. Uh preservation of rural lands, preservation of future, it's present archaeological, cultural resources. There there are a number of priorities that the city can set for what it wants to protect and conserve through the. Particularly through the DTC and D PDR programs, um so. And that, I get all that, I just wanna be real sure, when it, when you talk with citizens who call you, you know, I think, you know, I know. Behind the scenes, they've been working on that hard and heavy, you've been a big part of that. But I think now that where we're at, we need to make sure that we either have a pamphlet or something that.
For sure.
We can make sure people know that, you know what, okay, yeah, you're gonna get this check now, your property exists, but look, here's other options that you can use. And if you wanna sell it one day, where does that leave you?
Uh that's, I was harping on that this morning, right, the the whole concept of having information to hand to people, either what your options are, so you know. What you're doing.
Because TDR is a foreign word to ninety percent of our citizens, you know. And 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 it's, it's an important opportunity for folks, but I think in addition to the matrix, to the addition of the pamphlet, where we've talked about, and I think what the idea is, we. Roll this program out, once we, once we head down this road, we roll it out in public meetings. I think that's, it's gonna be essential to get the word out that way, for sure.
Any other questions? All right, great, thanks Doug, you answered very much, thanks, Anne, for being here. Uh next up is just a, uh gonna be a first read on uh some UDC modifications. A lot of these things are things that we've talked about in previous meetings, there are a couple of things that are newer. If if you have questions, there's, you know, a listing here that Mike has put together of what the actual changes are, happy to take those now. If you want, I'm also happy to set up a workshop, if you wanna, you know, peel off and dig into it more deeply, just depends on what the council would prefer. Uh again, first read, so we're not acting on this anyway, this this month, we've got a a month at least before we do any action. Uh so, you know, again, if you wanna set up a meeting with Mike, you're welcome to do that, whatever you wanna do to dig into it.
Um so, just reading through this uh. This packet. About the only kind of thing that I had some questions with was the buffers and um eliminating some of the buffers, and I just. Would like more information, so I'll probably have a, you know, request a sit-down meeting with you, and um so that was my only kind of. So the idea that uh, and I may be interpreting this wrong, but if a a villager. A village doesn't require any buffers, that that's sort of, if I have that right, that. That sort of crimps the whole idea that that we we had for citizens all along, that you could have these mixed-use villages, but you wouldn't see it from the road. So I'm not quite clear if we, we don't have a buffer requirement or, or could have a variance to remove that, am I?
Is the section eleven deals with the village open space requirement, or that's the um the amount that can be fulfilled off-site. I don't know if that's what you're looking at, but it actually reduces the amount.
Which you have section thirteen subsection five dash eight.
Okay, right, right.
And when you're talking about the uh. The designation from the top plan for the preferred village area, right, it's a huge swath, it's just not right on the parkway. So that was kind of my concern, a lot of that does touch the RL district, and my concern is if there's. A reduced buffer requirement, very good.
Right, so so the change, let me get into section thirteen. So the change is just um, removing uh, reference to South Fulton Parkway from one uh, from one part of that. See, I'd rather replace with the following. Within the preferred village area designated to come to hand along any non scenic road within a developable area. No buffer shall be required except adjacent to any rural district, uh, provided that the following requirements are met.
So I think, I think it might be good, Mike, to. Stretches or something and and walk people through what that means.
So right, this is about the ability to provide a buffer window. The locations that those buffer windows could go in the current language excludes South Fulton Parkway. If you adopted this change in section thirteen, South Fulton Parkway would be included uh, among the areas where those windows might be, might be allowed.
And I know when we, we had the discussions on um. Revisions to the zoning, we talked about the buffer windows, but I don't think we ever satisfied. What that would look like or the distance. I see that there was some reference to a distance of which you could see. And then it has to be set back, it can't be smack dab on the road.
Right, right. There are a couple of different, right, there are a couple of different kinds of windows, yeah, some of which are up on the road and some of which are. Set back the same distance of the buffer, but you're allowed to look into it. You don't have to have the visual separation.
And it's all that, you know, we had the new definition for this, for scenic road that that was put in there as well, but in there. That village swath along the parkway, Rico Road is on there, and Rico Road is not part of the scenic byway. So can we get a listing of those roads that we've identified as scenic roads?
Yes, we can, yeah, I can, I can certainly, I can certainly get that, um.
It's, it's in the document. Somewhere. But anyway, yes.
Yeah, we can get that, yep.
Mike, I do think that that like a graphic representation of. What was before and what could be now. Because I don't think it's as different as people think, but I mean, like showing is is. It's just easier to see this stuff on on a map.
Right, right. Yeah, I can put something to uh, together.
And and Mike, the other thing, I I wondered if that was just an error, um. When you're talking about section fourteen, the current subsection six dash two dash eight dash two on page fifty-four. I wonder if you meant to say page seventy-one.
Oh, that.
Cause I might be looking at the wrong thing, but it didn't fit with the language you had there, so I think it might be.
That could be, I was doing a bunch of copying and pasting, I may have forgotten to change a page number in there. Uh, I can go through all those. Well, now, you know what? You should be right, actually, because I went. I went uh. I went through at the end and I thought I double checked all the page numbers. I can, yeah, I could do that.
Because the fact is, there are several items in this list that are just correcting titles that were from last draft, right, so.
So section fourteen, page number all.
Anyway, if if anybody wants their, you know, if you've got a list of things you wanna get further dive into. Happy to set up either individual meetings or a workshop, whatever works best for folks, right? To to get that resolved. And if there are some functional issues after those conversations that we wanna dive into a little more deeply, whatever the right way to do that is to.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I'm looking at um. The bigger, like, community commons, right? Motion picture and sound recording industries and the data processing services, just kind of understand, you know. Seeing what that all breaks a lot again, how we're.
So two of those community commons is brand new use. It's the sort of um.
We talked about it before, this catchall.
Rural, that's right, rural catchall for a mix of uses, it might be called agriculture, recreation, might be some residential, some um, uh, re lodging. Uh, so a bunch of different kinds of uses that might might go together in one of those. Each one would have to be specifically defined, and the application council would have to define the specific. Or approve the specific group of things, a specific implementation of it. The large movie studio is written actually um, specifically with the experience of looking at the applications for the 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 current studio that's up there. And realizing that um, a lot of our, that they're going, most of their development is behind a security perimeter, and a lot of our um. Uh, design or rather form, how things have to address the road and a lot of things related to the form of how things happen. Um, aren't necessarily appropriate to be applied behind that. Behind that, and so, so it has to do with, most of those have to do with that, so there's a list of things that um, that say are not regular, regular. Regulations would apply in a hamlet, but when it's in this big studio behind the perimeter. Um, it it wouldn't necessarily have to apply that way. Some of their specific adjustments, some just say it doesn't apply. And then the other one is the um, data processing center. Um, that's a use that already exists, but there were no specific supplemental use provisions related to it. And um, again, thinking about the big uh, big buildings that that could involve. And thinking about the movie studio, I I kind of grabbed a couple of those things related to the movie studio and thought, you know, these are things that we should think about. Think about applying here as well.
And we actually did a little bit of research with people that are in that space of placing those on. You know, what do they look like? I mean, to to remind everybody, the specifics of that is that it is a bigger building than you would ordinarily want. That can sit behind a buffer, that has almost no employees, has almost no truck traffic, and just spits out X money, so. You know, it's it's one of those, if you were ever gonna have something like that happen, that would be the law. And, you know, in the context of the conversation about the movie studio, I'm thinking about how some of those might fit in. To Mike's point, it's a special use we already had, we just hadn't defined it. Uh, and and this is putting definition around it based on what people were in the space saying is what they need here. And uh, we've got an active one that we're talking to.
Mike, do we have a category for institutional? I know we don't have one for industrial, but.
There's, one of the categories on that use table is institutional, yes. See, the whole, the whole use table, the whole proposed use table is included, um, so it's uh. Yeah, the second page of the green table, the first full page of the green table is is half institution. And that's where the motion picture or sound recording facility is is uh, appears on the, on there as well.
Hey, Mike, what kind of buffers of Harrison known one?
Uh, the buffers, hundred, hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty feet around the outside.
From the parkway, inside.
Parkway, so I, you know, I haven't, I haven't measured the plan, I haven't gotten a hold of it in that, you know, with the scale and and seen what they're actually showing there. Parkway is supposed to be three hundred feet, hundred and fifty around perimeter.
Yeah, what I'm saying, just for my, trying to thought there, when that is measured, I guess, is that measured since. That's measured from the property or from the center of South Parkway?
Yeah, no, not the center of the parkway, from the edge of the.
And then we go back.
Right, that's right. So there's probably, depending on which side of the parkway you're on, there might be a hundred and fifty feet. Or more or less, but three hundred foot wide um, uh, right away. So it could be a long way before you hit that property line, and then we require the the three hundred foot buffer on the outside of that.
Cause when we looked at the, the things, it looks like it was right up on that.
Yeah, I think, I I think that that was supposed to represent um, is the the property, the three hundred foot right away for the parkway, not the pavement itself.
Okay, yeah, I was just asking.
Should be, should be that way. We'll, we'll get, if, if when we get an application, we'll, we'll have stuff that we can measure. And make sure that they've got it right. Right, right, that's right, that's right.
That's what, we we haven't gotten any material yet, right? So you've got nothing, but a scale on.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yeah, it makes sense. We're not giving like fifty variances for something that didn't anything.
Well, and particularly on something that we've already said that we're, we're okay with, we just don't have to detail it on a. Uh, any other questions on that?
Yeah, I did have one thing, just a clarification on section twenty-one. Um, it just reorders some of the language around lot size minimums, all all that same language is there. Um, and we added a reference to family lots, because that should be, you know, to point out to, okay, here's a little exception. There is one actual change in there. Um, currently, the language says that um. Uh, any lot with well accepted has to be at least one acre. We took out the number and just referred it out to health department says how it regulates that, because that's really where the one that came from in the first place. If they wanna change it, they can change it. That should be fine with us.
Cool, thanks. All right, um, Dana, are you talking or is Robbie talking about?
Might be myself and Rick on this one, but be glad to. Talk about it. This is the ordinance that was written by our league council, actually. Uh, what we have to do, since uh, the governor signed into. Law, the ability for us to uh, charge eight percent now for hotel auto tax, we got an ordinance that's gonna put that in play. Right now, we currently charge um, seven percent for hotel auto tax for anybody staying in hotel or inn or short term rental or Airbnb, all that kind of stuff. The that, the guest pays that, and then we collect it. And and we distribute it according to all, so this basically affect, this is the mechanism that was set in place, and it'll start March first, so we'll go to eight percent. That changes, you have a C V B now, we got a board member here, so it changes what happens with a portion of those monies. It'll go to our C V B, not the Atlanta C V B, and that's dedicated to them, and that's. Process we're in right now, so the bigger process for us on the administrative end is making sure that. All the entities understand and know if you're a hotel or you're in, you're short term rental, Airbnb, all those kind of things, we're working with our consultants on that. To make sure that that is being imposed. We understand that's gonna be, we, some may miss it initially, but we wanna make sure we do that. And also communicating with the Atlanta Commission, the business bureau, let them know that, hey, we're not sending you any more money, sorry, um, it's going to, it's going to our C V B. So that's what this is about, right? Rick can expand on more.
Right, Robbie, this um. Uh, is the actual ordinance that enacts all that or creates it, but Dana and I were talking about this before the work section started. She'd rather have this become effective April one, to make sure we have enough time to get as much information to those who will be paying the higher tax. Uh, including uh, some of the folks through the. So the only change we're gonna request is post the March one, let's make it April one. And if we're ready early, we'll submit it. We gave up a month, but let's try to get it where it's right.
Uh, the next one is the municipal superintendent, that is.
Yes, um, these are two, these are two um. Two resolutions, this one in the setting the qualifying fees that are required by state laws, we did it January. Um, every year we have an election. Um, naming the seat clerk as the uh, municipal elections independent. And then the next resolution setting the qualifying fees, um, you'll see they are increased, um, and they were thirty-six dollars in the past. Uh, but they now increase to a hundred and eight hours, and by state law, that's. Thirty percent of the salary, and um, as you may remember, last year. Um, guys voted to increase salary. We don't, they wouldn't take office till next year.
But you're paying the power queen.
Somehow that doesn't seem right, because that's not the component dollars.
But that's the salary the person will be making.
Come January first.
Alrighty. Good for that. Uh, Rick, we, we were having a conversation earlier today. Uh, where we were all confused on where we have left the redistricting thing, and you had talked about that in the last meeting. And what's just, what's our time frame? What's our timeline?
Well, we gotta do it before qualifying.
Yeah.
Okay, um, what we did before, we, we districted twice, that's probably. Um, I believe both times, I know in two thousand twelve, when we did it after two thousand ten, the Seattle Digest. Um, we had a public meeting, wasn't a council meeting, it was just me presenting. What uh, we had to meet, what we had to do, the reasons why all this happened. We had to go at that point for justice, because.
Right.
Right, um, so we had a a, a meeting to discuss that with the public, so it was very informal, whatever else. And I believe we did that again after the law annexation. We just had a very informal meeting, it was not a formal public hearing or whatever. It was kind of stifled to have conversations. I would recommend if you guys do that again, I mean, I don't, it's not. It's not like the one back in two thousand twelve, or such a huge change, but there's still some significant changes.
That is what we talked about, we just didn't pick up.
We need to schedule a meeting, you know, whatever is convenient for the public, I'm happy to present, or we can get our, our consultant to come out, or both of us, whatever. And talk about it, and then have the public um, hearing process, the formal adoption of the new district.
All right, so let's, let's try to get that public meeting scheduled later this month before the next. Council series, so that we can have our first public hearing. So two reader or one read in our.
Stumping the lawyer, huh? Uh, I think it's, I think it's a first read and then you actually have.
Yeah, okay, so let's make sure that the first read's on next month, right? I don't wanna accidentally end up in March or, I mean, May, you know. Worrying about getting ready for qualifying.
Can I request some, and 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 it's probably not you, Rick, it's probably City Hall, but. They do that map, can we get a outlines of districts, can we get the name of those roads?
They did one like that.
I mean, that you can see.
He just didn't send it to everybody.
Okay, yeah.
And some people had asked for it and and.
And maybe if it's on the screens here, or it's large enough, you can actually read the road names or whatever.
But the answer is yes.
The other thing that might help, Robbie, if we can get um, a consultant to do, and just superimpose. The current with the proposed, so it's not side by side, or one screen, next screen, that's proper, I think that would help. Right, and there's just not a whole lot of wiggle, just isn't, because of the requirements of the law, you can.
Robbie, just do that in a PowerPoint, have the two slides melt into each other, you know, that's a good way to do it. You can see right away where it's changing.
And y'all, you said, but you want a special call meeting, or you wanna do it the next work session, or you wanna?
No, I think it's a special, well, it's a public meeting, it's not a council meeting.
It's not a council, it's just a meeting with the public, but uh. It would be great if we could do it in January. But, but you know, it's not impossible to do it after we just announced the first read, although I know they kind of sets things going. Uh, I'm just trying to think.
That's, that's my thought, like, you know, the, a couple of days before that work session at the latest, right? So.
Right, I'm just thinking about the availability of our consultants and and me to try and get those. And even if, I think the first read was in March, and in October, that's not. If we had to push it back.
That's, that's right. I I get it, but I don't wanna. We took this conversation last month and just didn't follow through, so I'm, I gotta, you're, you're gonna make sure that we get this, all right, thanks.
So let's do it this way, just beat a dead horse. Uh, let's get the, the public information meeting set, and then we'll know when first read is gonna.
Correct, okay. Right, and the goal is to get it set. All right, and then another thing that, that was a conversation, uh, an email thread that came in just after we had set the agenda, but it's something. After to talk about, you know, we're getting all this new audio visual equipment, and part of that is to make the whole process of. Watching the meetings from outside easier too, um, you know, we'll have. Individual mics that you can hot and unhot, which means you're not talking over each other. It's just a much better setup. And uh, we've had people talking about the idea that we should also be asking the commissions to use that setup and doing their meetings on Zoom as well. And recording them as well in Zoom. And what, what I'd like to suggest, because we'll have the technical capacity to do that, is that we just ask everybody to do that. Now, you know, one of the things that we're doing in here is Robbie's panning back and forth and all of that. Well, I don't think we're, we need to require. Them to have an extra person there to be a great photographer. They can put the camera back in the back and watch the whole meeting.
We have, yeah, we have two cameras, I have one for you guys and one for here.
There's the fact that everybody's got their own mic is the key.
That's.
Because as you can hear what people are saying. Well, that's my point. My point is just setting the expectation going forward. As soon as this stuff's all working. But all the commissions are also gonna run their meetings the way that we do, where it's on Zoom and it's reportable.
Yeah, they're gonna finish installation next Wednesday, and then there'll be training involved.
So by our next council, not this, this coming one, but the by our next council meeting, we should be on the system. And we'll probably set up a quick training before the next work session, so that everybody knows which buttons.
Yeah, it'll be easy for you guys, the operator, just the equipment is gonna be in the back of the room, so that's gonna be. And and hopefully it's a turnkey operation and it's pretty simple and uh. You know, if I can do it, then mostly anybody can do it, I would think, right?
I I mean, we've all talked about this, everybody likes to have more transparency, right? So why wouldn't we try to do that if we could?
And that's what it's here for.
And that's what it's here for.
No. The key is though. No, but the key is, you know, if, if for some reason a person's running his gear, what do you do back there to make it all happen, right?
Right, to make it all happen.
Yeah, right, you don't have to come. All right, that's it for our, um. That's it for our work session. Anybody got anything else before we? We will see you Tuesday. You, you absolutely can make a request.
So I, um, get these notebooks out every month, and if anybody has anything actually at home that would like to bring.